Thank you, thank you.
How are you?
Are we good?
I'm good, I'm good. Most welcome. Thanks guys, thank you, thank you. Are you, my friend? Session is called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, peras ang silang anan. Alang ng puso sa tipit moy buhay. Lupang hiniram, kuya ka lang magiting. Sa manlulupi, kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa lakitong pagka. Kayilang ang pulah at awit sa paglayang nilawahan. Ang isap ng wata at mo'y kagumpay naratingin. Ang pituing na araw niya kaylan, mapay matidiling. Lupa ng maraw ng war, aming pagsitka. Uyay labit sa tipik. Amin ligaya dapat may maghahapin at mamatay ng tali ng sayo.
Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer. The secretary general is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abalos, Abante, Bundah, Acharon, Asidre. Ako, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Ataidi, Mentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Berzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Birones, Brosas, Buhain, Bulut Biktang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayan Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castrofranz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Kuah, Chungalau, Ko Angelica Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wangko Jaime, Ko Wangko Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuah, Kuaresma, Dagoo, Dalipe, Dalu, Dayang Hira, Dasa, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Del Mar, De Los Santos, Demoporo, Mohamed Khalid, Demoporo, Siti Amia, Yuniso, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Mike, Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Esperas, Espina, Estrella, Yuleda, Fariñas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Bella, Gallos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose, Arturo, Garcia Maria Angel, Angel, Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gajola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Gonzalez, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Gorseta, Giko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagadorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaychong, Loyola, Luisstro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Branyawn, Marco Letta, Marcos, Marinho Hernandez, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Nobrales Juan, Fidel Felipe, Nobrales Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwana Dison, Padjernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisias Agabas, Umarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Repto, Regansha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon D'Lo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yoelio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamarie, Romaldo, Romolo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Saknuran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbango, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulug, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horashos, Swansing Michaela Angel, Angelica, Suarez, Talledo, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Michael, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Shamir, Tan Joseph James, Tan, Tan Boot, Tan Chait, Tan Watko. Tariela, Tidoro, Teves Jose, Tiyanko, Tiyeng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joslin, Tulfo, Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Titor T., Umalie, Unabia, Unga, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuason, Vergara, Versosa, Villar, Villar, Villar Fuerte, Luis Raymond, Villar Fuerte, Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villar, Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap, Cristiante, Yap, Christos, Christos Person, Yap, Edvik, Yap, Eric, Yu, Devina Grace, Yu, Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Mister Speaker, the roll call shows that three hundred nine members responded to the call.
Three hundred nine? With three hundred nine members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of a call room. Majority leader.
Mister Speaker, we recognize the guests of the honorable speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. They are Police General Benjamin C. Acorda Junior, the chief PNP, Police Brigadier General Romel Francisco Marbell, Police Brigadier General Nicolas Salvador, Police Brigadier General Nicolas Torres, Police Colonel Rocky Bousa, Police Colonel Alberto Pitalliano, Police Major Diceri Rojas, and Police Major Margaret Dawson.
Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mister Speaker, I move to suspend for a few minutes.
Suspend? Session suspended.
Me, we request the members of the house to take a picture with the police chief.
Session is resumed.
Mister Speaker, yeah, Mister Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business. I request that the secretary general be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. Sue move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion approved. The secretary general is directed to do the same.
Reference of Business Bills on First Reading. House Bill 7902, requiring all pedestrian overpasses to be made climate change friendly by Representative Pancho.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 7903, declaring December eighteenth of every year a special working holiday to be known as the Overseas Filipino Workers' Day by Representative Magsino.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 7910, renewing for another twenty-five years the franchise granted to Northern Mindanao Broadcasting System Inc. under RA number eight one five seven by Representative Aquino.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 7911, amending RA number one zero nine seven three by further granting the director of the PNP Anti-Cybercrime Group the authority to administer oath and to issue subpoena and subpoena ducestecum by Representative Chua.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 7912, establishing the Philippine Forensic DNA Database by Representative Chua.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 7913, establishing a regulatory framework for a robust, reliable, and trustworthy development, application, and use of artificial intelligence systems, creating the Philippine Council on Artificial Intelligence by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
To the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 7914, requiring operators of amusement or theme parks and adventure or extreme sports facilities to institutionalize safety measures and secure comprehensive general liability insurance coverage for their clients by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Bill 7915, to provide for health and work safety standards for professional boxers by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Bill 7916, institutionalizing the Kadiwa Program by Representative Bautista.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 7917, mandating the periodic training of teachers and school personnel on first aid and basic life support in all public and private institutions of learning by Representatives Mercado Revilla, Revilla Brian, and Revilla Ramon D'Lo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7918, defining the responsibilities and liabilities of owners and operators of parking establishments by Representative Tiyeng.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 7919, granting senior citizens a five percent discount on their first two hundred kilowatt hour of electricity consumption and exemption from payment of any senior citizen subsidy collected by the government by Representative Escudero.
To the Special Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 7920, strengthening the Animal Health and Veterinary Services Act by Representative Breones.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 7921, upgrading the entry level position of registered nurses in all public health institutions from salary grade fifteen to salary grade nineteen by Representative Panotes.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 7923, providing all Barangay officials, including Barangay Thanods, members of the Lupon ng Taga Pamayapa, Barangay health workers, and Barangay daycare workers a lump sum retirement pay equivalent to one year honorarium by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 7924, providing for the administrative and summary titling of real properties used as sites for public schools by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 7925, providing for the protection of the rights of airline passengers by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 7926, amending sections fifteen and sixteen, Article Five of the Food Safety Act of two thousand and thirteen by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 7927, establishing a national anti-doping policy in sports by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 7928, to establish the College Living Expenses Financing Program by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 7929, to conserve and protect Philippine public forests, mangroves, and wildlife through a comprehensive environmental program of renewal, replanting, and reforestation by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 7930, establishing a national economic decentralization plan to facilitate further growth in all regions of the Philippines by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Bill 7931, providing incentives to public school teachers who are assigned outside of their towns and provinces by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7932, strengthening animal welfare in the Philippines, creating for the purpose the Animal Welfare Bureau under the Department of Agriculture by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 7935, instituting the Magna Carta for Child Development Workers by Representative Hernandez.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 7936, creating the Magna Carta of Barangay Nutrition Scholars by Representative Hernandez.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 7937, upgrading Lagawe District Office of LTO into a regular LTO Class C district office in Lamut, Ifugao.
Conversion of Alfonso Listah Extension Office into a regular LTO Class D district office in Alfonso Listah, Ifugao by Representative Chungalau.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 7938, allowing the expunishment of criminal records of qualified individuals in government databases by Representative Abalos.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 7940, granting benefits and privileges to indigent overseas Filipino workers by Representatives Tulfo Joselin, Yap, Edvik, Yap, Eric, and Tulfo Ralph Wendell.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 7943, establishing the Mindanao State University General Santos City Campus College of Medicine in General Santos City by Representative Acharon.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 7944, prescribing policies, guidelines, rules, and regulations for government contracts to be known as Ang Bagong Pilipinas Government Procurement Reform Act by Representative Gonzalez Aurelio.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 7945, expanding the benefits of members of the PNP by Representative Ordanes.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 7946, institutionalizing the Assistance to Individuals in Crisis Situation Program by Representative Repto.
To the Committee on Social Services.
House Bill 7947, declaring May twenty-third of every year as National Cervical Cancer Screening Day by Representative Kimbo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 7948, strengthening the Kalinga State University by Representative Mangawang.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 7949, granting Philippine citizenship to Fabio Luis Ide by Representative Versosa.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 7950, instituting a comprehensive national care plan to encourage cooperation, accountability, and research for the education and support of persons with autism by Representative Santos.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7951, requiring all national, regional, and provincial government hospitals to establish, operate, and maintain a dialysis ward or unit in their respective hospitals and providing free dialysis and treatment to indigent patients by Representative Santos.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 7952, providing for a free annual medical checkup by Representative Santos.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 7953, instituting the Magna Carta for Daycare Workers by Representative Santos.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 7954, to establish a grant program to provide vision care to children by Representative Santos.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 7955, granting Y2H Broadcasting Network Incorporated a franchise to construct, install, establish, operate, and maintain a frequency modulation radio broadcasting station in Dumaguete City, Negros Oriental with signal coverage to the whole country by Representative Zamora Maria Harmon.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 7956, upgrading declassification of Partido District Office of the LTO in Tigaoan, Camarinesur, from Class D to Class C district office by Representative Fuente Bella.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 7957, interchanging the names of the first and second district engineering offices of Davao de Oro Province by Representative Zamora Maria Harmon.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 7958, reclassifying a parcel of land of the public domain located in Barangay Senawal in General Santos as alienable and disposable land open to disposition for agricultural, residential, commercial, industrial by Representative Acharon.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 7959, to rationalize the Philippine Environmental Impact Assessment System by Representative Alonte.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 7960, recognizing the civil effects of annulment, declaration of nullity, and dissolution of marriages by canon law by Representative Makapagal Arroyo.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
Resolutions. House Resolution nine three two, expressing profound congratulations to Philippine men's hockey team for winning the two thousand and twenty-three International Ice Hockey Federation World Championship Division Four by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution nine three three, urging the Congressional Committee on Energy to immediately conduct an inquiry on the region-wide unscheduled and intermittent blackout in Western Visayas by Representatives Tupas, Baronda, Gorseta, Benitez, Defensor, and Ang.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine three four, directing the appropriate committee to immediately conduct an investigation into the prolonged power outage in the islands of Panay, Gimaraas, and Negros by Representative Fernandez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine three five, congratulating and commending Celine Abalos for winning the gold medal at the two thousand and twenty-three Australian Master Kids Golf Competition by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution nine three six, expressing the deepest sympathies and condolences of the House of Representatives on the demise of Oscar Lopez by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolutions Number nine three seven, nine three eight, congratulating and commending Marcus James Rimot Tamayo for winning the gold medal at the International Kangaroo Math Competition in Thailand International Mathematical Olympiad by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Resolution nine three nine, directing the Committee on Human Rights to investigate the grave violations of international humanitarian law allegedly committed by the AFP against Benito Tiamzon, Wilma Tiamzon, and their eight companions by Representatives Castrofranz, Brosas, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine four zero, directing the Committee on Basic Education and Culture to conduct an inquiry on recommendations by various groups to revert to the June-to-March academic calendar for basic education by Representatives Mercado Revilla, Revilla Brian, and Revilla Ramon D'Lo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine four one, organizing the Philippines-Azerbaijan Parliamentarians Friendship Group by Representatives Labad Labad and Arenas.
To the Committee of Interparliamentary Relations and Diplomacy.
House Resolution nine four two, urging the appropriate House Committee or Committees to inquire into the economic, financial, and operational viability of solar-powered irrigation systems on shallow wells in the country by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine four three, urging the House Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples to conduct an investigation on the issued certification precondition to Pan Pacific Renewable Power Philippines Corporation and ensure the rights and welfare of snug indigenous peoples of Kabugao, Apayo against harassment and intimidation by Representatives Manuel, Brosas, Castrofranz, and Mangawang.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine four four, urging the House Committee on Energy to conduct an investigation on the root cause of the rotational brownouts in Panay, Gimaraas, and Negros Islands and to identify immediate solutions to the prolonged brownouts by Representatives Manuel, Brosas, and Castrofranz.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine four five, urging the House Committee on Transportation to conduct an inquiry regarding-
House Resolution 945 urging the House Committee on Transportation to conduct an inquiry regarding the power outage and system glitch at the Ninoy Aquino International Airport Terminal 3 on May 1 and 2, 2023 by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 946 expressing the profound sympathy and sincere condolence of the House on the death of Governor Carlos Padilla by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 947 directing the appropriate committees of the House to conduct an inquiry on the implementation of EO Number 130 Series of 2021 and AO Number 202125 amending Executive Order Number 79 Series of 2012 institutionalizing and implementing reforms in the Philippine mining sector by Representative Marcoleta.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 948 urging the Committee on Information and Communications Technology to conduct an investigation on the perceived failure of the NTC to require telecommunications entities to provide better internet connection and mobile data service in the country by Representative Tiyanko.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 949 expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of the Honorable Carlos M. Padilla, Governor of the Province of Neva Vizcaya, and former Deputy Speaker and Representative of the Lone Legislative District of Neva Vizcaya during the 8th, 10th, 11th, 12th, 14th, 15th, and 16th Congresses by Representatives from Waldes Ferdinand Martin, Dalipe Libanan, Marcos from Waldes Yada Marie, and Asijae.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications, letters and emails from certain local chief executives and officials transmitting to the House of Representatives copies of their reports on fund utilizations and status of programs, projects, activity implementation relative to the local government support fund and the Bayanehan grant to cities, municipalities, and provinces for certain months of 2022 and 2023.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 30, 2023 of the NEA Administrator submitting to the House a copy of their fourth quarter report of NEA Comprehensive Agirin Reform Program Irrigation Component for Calendar Year 2022.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Letter dated February 23, 2023 of the COA Regional Director, Regional Office Number 4A furnishing the House with copies of their annual audit reports on certain water districts.
To the Committee on Public Accounts.
Letter dated March 9, 2023 of the Acting Presidential Advisor on Peace, Reconciliation, and Unity informing the House that OPAPRUS financial report for the month of February 2023 was submitted to the Unified Reporting System and posted on their official website.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letters dated March 13 and 16, 2023 of the DOTR Undersecretary for Administration and Finance transmitting to the House copies of their reports.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated March 16, 2023 of the BSP Governor submitting to the House a copy of their report on economic and financial developments in the Philippines for the fourth quarter of 2022.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letter dated March 24, 29, and April 4, 11, and 14, 2023 of the BSP Bank Officers VI, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services transmitting to the House duly certified copies of certain BSP issuances.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letter dated March 9, 2023 of the DND Senior Undersecretary Officer in Charge submitting to the House a copy of their year-end accomplishment report on the revised AFP Modernization Program for Calendar Year 2022.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
National Maritime Polytechnic Annual Report of 2021.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Committee Reports, Committee Report Number 503 submitted by the Committees on Agriculture and Food, Waste and Means and Appropriations in House Bill 7941, Committee Report 504 submitted by the Committees on Agriculture and Food and Appropriations in House Bill 7942, Committee Report 505 submitted by the Committees on Higher and Technical Education Appropriations and Waste and Means in House Bill 7961.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the deformant of the approval of the previous session.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands, motions approved.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of the Honorable Jefferson Konghun. The guests of the gentlemen from the First District of Sambales are from the Municipality of San Marcelino Sambales, headed by Vice Mayor Christopher Gongora and SB members Lesander Aquino and Darrel Labio, together with 18 Barunong barangays, namely Eduardo G. Lopez, Edgardo Duñas, Jesse Soria, Jean Corpus, Churchill Pabunan, Rick Javier, Philcar Asperas, Jerry Mariano, Gerard Cababaro, Dionisio Garcia, Angel Cabab, Carmelita Estrada, Michael Piga, Rex Paredo, Jerry Ladaw, Romeo Jalisco, Maureen Arquero, and Anthony Manzano.
Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of the following House Bills on third reading: All local bills pertaining to the establishment of marine hatcheries, House Bill Number 3093, 7294, 7373, 7532, and 7533. Copies of the aforementioned bills have been previously distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General read the title of the measures and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The chair here stands, motions approved, the Secretary General is directed to do so. Please proceed.
House Bill 3093, an act establishing a multi-species hatchery in the Municipality of Cebuco, Province of San Wangga del Norte, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 7294, an act establishing a multi-species marine hatchery in Sitio Mambukog, barangay Zone 16, city of Talisay, province of Negros Occidental, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 7373, an act establishing a multi-species marine hatchery in the city of Isabela, province of Basilan, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 7532, an act establishing a multi-species fish hatchery and research center in the Municipality of Bato, province of Catanduanes, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 7533, an act establishing a multi-species marine hatchery in the Municipality of Libanan, province of Camarinesur, and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of the said House Bills.
I know this. Yours is here, sorry. Engineering.
Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez. Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Assistyo, Atide, Hamentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Briones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulitbeg Tang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayonui, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castrofrans, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chugalaw, Ko Angelica Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Kopilar, Ko Wanko Jaime, Ko Wanko Mark, Kolada, Kolientes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuarezma, Dago, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Udella, Farinyas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrel Juliet Marie, Flores, Cortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Agidorn, Haresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Oribata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkay Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marinio, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Angchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Oanodizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Penya, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisia Sagabas, Pumaren, Uno, Kimbo, Rama, Recto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilia Bryan, Revilia Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yoloheo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rishel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihang, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Shai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Yodoro, Tevez Jose, Tiyanko, Tiyeng, Tulintino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Stupas, Yutor, Ti, Umani, Unavia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velozotuazon, Bergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villiarasa Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yam Suwan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christoferson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divinagrees, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers 3093, 7294, 7373, 7532, and 7533. Almonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Bautista, Bondok, Ko Angelica Natasha, Kolada, Cruz Ricardo, Duavit, Duterte, Enverga, Farinyas, Garcia Albert, Giko, Labad Labad, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoleta, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Romero, Singson Rishel, Tan Shamir, Tan Stephen James, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Ti, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Yap Eric, Yu Jaisal Victoria.
With 278 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Numbers 3093, 7294, 7373, 7532, and 7533 are hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bills pertaining to the National Integrated Protected Area Systems, House Bills Number 7479, 7506, 7529, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands, motions approved, the Secretary General is so directed. Please proceed.
House Bill 7479, an act declaring a parcel of land located in the Municipality of Hawaii in the province of Ilocos Norte, a protected area with a category of protected landscape under the National Integrated Protection Area System to be referred to as the Hawaii Lake Protected Landscape, providing for its management and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 7506, an act declaring a parcel of land located in the Municipality of San Francisco in the province of Queso, a protected area with a category of protected landscape under the National Integrated Protected Area System to be referred to as the San Francisco Protected Landscape and providing for its management and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 7529, an act declaring a parcel of land located in the Municipality of San Andres in the province of Queso, a protected area with a category of protected landscape and seascape under the National Integrated Protected Area System to be referred to as the Albayan Protected Landscape and Seascape, providing for its management and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of the said House Bills. Honorable Representatives, Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Assistyo, Atide, Hamentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Briones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulitbeg Tang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayonui, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castrofrans, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chugalaw, Ko Angelica Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Kopilar, Ko Wanko Jaime, Ko Wanko Mark, Kolada, Kolientes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuarezma, Dago, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Udella, Farinyas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrel Juliet Marie, Flores, Cortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Agidorn, Haresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Oribata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkay Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marinio, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Angchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Oanodizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Penya, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisia Sagabas, Pumaren, Uno, Kimbo, Rama, Recto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilia Bryan, Revilia Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yoloheo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria. Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihang, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Teves Jose, Tianko, Teng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutoor, Ti, Umani, Unavia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velozotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villiarasa Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yam Suwan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Second call of members in consideration on third reading House Bill numbers 7479, 7506, and 7529. Almonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Bautista, Bondok, Ko Angelica Natasha, Cruz Ricardo, Duavit, Duterte, Enverga, Fariñas, Garcia Albert, Giko, Labad Labad, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoleta, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Romero, Singson Rachel, Tan Shamir, Tan Stephen James, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Ti Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Yap Eric, Yu Jaisal Victoria.
With two hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 7479, 7506, and 7529 are hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bills pertaining to national roads and district engineering offices. House Bill 907, 1147, 1304, 1305, 1307, 1308, 1312, 1314, 7539, 7553, 7645, 7647, and 7648, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House, and for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General read the title of the bill and thereafter call for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here is non. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to do so. Please proceed.
House Bill 907, an act creating a district engineering office in the fifth legislative district of the province of Batangas and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 1147, an act creating a district engineering office in the sixth legislative district of the province of Isabela and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 1304, an act converting the roads stretching from Camunirado Junction to Barangays Taytay, Barriu, Palaanog, and Mauraro in the municipality of Kamalig, province of Albay into a national road and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 1305, an act converting the roads stretching from the Camunirado Junction to the barangays of Bangabog, Kaguiiba, and Parain in the municipality of Kamilig, province of Albay into a national road and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 1307, an act converting the Daraga-Ligaspi diversion road in the municipality of Daraga and in the city of Ligaspi, province of Albay, into a national road and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 1308, an act converting the Daraga-Pilar diversion road in the municipality of Daraga, province of Albay, in the municipality of Pilar, province of Sorsugon, into a national road and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 1312, an act converting the Kamilig bypass road in the municipality of Kamilig, province of Albay, into a national road and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 1314, an act converting the roads stretching from the Camunirado Junction in barangays Camun, Katmon, and Del Rosario in the municipality of Kamalig in the barangays of Allabo, Burgos, and Baskaran in the municipality of Daraga, all in the province of Albay into a national road and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 7539, an act creating a district engineering office in the third legislative district of the province of Bataan and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 7553, an act creating a district engineering office in the second legislative district of the province of Davao del Norte and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 7645, an act creating a district engineering office in the fourth legislative district of the province of Bucadnon and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 7647, an act creating a district engineering office in the lone legislative district of the city of General Santos and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 7648, an act creating a district engineering office in the sixth legislative district of the province of Batangas and appropriating funds therefore.
Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill numbers 907, 1147, 1304, 1305, 1307, 1308, 1312, 1314, 7539, 7553, 7645, 7647, and 7648. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkola, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautistalim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayunui, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalau, Ko Angelica Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wanko Jaime, Ko Wanko Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Dagooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo Cityamina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleio, Emano, Enverga, Escudero. Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Udella, Fariñas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentibelia, Galeos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagadorn, Haresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limcaichong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisai, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Oanodizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rehto, Rehencha, Remulia, Rivilia Brian, Rivilia Ramonjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedda Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihang, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Teves Jose, Tianko, Teng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutoor, Ti, Umani, Unavia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velozotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villiarasa Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yam Suwan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Second call of members in consideration on third reading, House Bill numbers 907, 1147, 1304, 1305, 1307, 1308, 1312, 1314, 7539, 7553, 7645, 7647, and 7648. Almonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Bautista, Bondok, Ko Angelica Natasha, Cruz Ricardo, Duavit, Duterte, Enverga, Fariñas, Garcia Albert, Giko, Labad Labad, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoleta, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Romero, Singson Rachel, Tan Shamir, Tan Stephen James, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Yap Eric, Yu Jaisal Victoria.
With two hundred eighty members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill numbers 907, 1147, 1304, 1305, 1307, 1308, 1312, 1314, 7539, 7553, 7645, 7647, and 7648 are hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of the following local bills, all pertaining to the establishment of tourism destinations and ecotourism sites. House Bill Number 6936, 7541, 7546, 7547, 7548, 7550, 7551, 7552, 7557, 7615, 7626, 7639, 7641, 7642, 7646, and 7688, copies of which have been distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the aforementioned bills and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here is non. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to do so. Please proceed.
House Bill 6936, an act declaring the Tanap Aviz Falls located in the municipality of Burgos, province of Ilocos Norte, an ecotourism destination. House Bill 7541, an act declaring Mount Anahau located in Barangay Banlag in the city of Valencia, province of Bucadnon, an ecotourism zone. House Bill 7546, an act declaring Migtalahid Falls located in Barangay Dansulihon-Kagayan de Oro City, province of Misamis Oriental, an ecotourism site. House Bill 7547, an act declaring Birhin Falls located in Barangay Dansulihon-Kagayan de Oro City, province of Misamis Oriental, an ecotourism site. House Bill 7548, an act declaring Igbalayli Falls located in Barangay Balubal-Kagayan de Oro City, Misamis of Misamis Oriental, an ecotourism site. House Bill Number 7550, an act declaring Ulo Balangot Falls located in Barangay Dansulihon-Kagayan de Oro City, province of Misamis Oriental, an ecotourism site. House Bill 7551, an act declaring Bakkay Point Lighthouse located in the municipality of Lilaon, province of Cebu, a tourism destination. House Bill 7552, an act declaring Santiago Public Beach located in Camotes Island, municipality of San Francisco, province of Cebu, a tourism destination. House Bill 7557, an act declaring the Kalinigang Mountain Range located in the municipality of Lagonoy Prestashon and Garchitorena, province of Camarinesur, an ecotourism destination. House Bill 7615, an act declaring Jordan Waterfalls located in Barangay Getsemini-Balugan City, province of Agusan del Sur, an ecotourism site. House Bill 7626, an act declaring Anzap Twin Falls located in Barangay Bibaga, municipality of Mayantoc, province of Tarlac, an ecotourism site. House Bill 7639, an act declaring the Kanding Ecotourism Park located in the municipality of San Clemente, province of Tarlac, an ecotourism site. House Bill 7641, an act declaring Pagoring Caves located in the municipality of Libmanan, province of Camarinesur, an ecotourism destination. House Bill 7642, an act declaring Sitio Duig Nature Park located in the municipality of San Clemente, province of Tarlac, an ecotourism destination. House Bill 7646, an act declaring Sagumata Falls located in Barangay Lourdes, city of Valencia, province of Bucadnon, an ecotourism destination. House Bill 7688, an act declaring Kolosboa Hills known as the New Zealand of Central Luzon, located in Barangay Kolosboa, municipality of Huayapo, province of Nuevo Isian, an ecotourism destination.
Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill numbers 6936, 7541, 7546, 7547, 7548, 7550, 7551, 7552, 7557, 7615, 7626, 7639, 7641, 7642, 7646, and 7688.
Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkola, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautistalim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayunui, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalau, Ko Angelica Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wanko Jaime, Ko Wanko Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Dagooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo Cityamina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleio, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Udella, Fariñas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentibelia, Galeos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagadorn, Haresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limcaichong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisai, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Oanodizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rehto, Rehencha, Remulia, Rivilia Brian, Rivilia Ramonjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedda Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihang, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Teves Jose, Tianko, Teng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutoor, Ti, Umani, Unavia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velozotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villiarasa Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yam Suwan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria. Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, U Divina Grace, U Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri.
Second call of members in consideration on third reading, House Bill numbers 9636, 7541, 7546, 7547, 7548, 7550, 7551, 7552, 7557, 7615, 7626, 7639, 7641, 7642, 7646, and 7688. Almonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Bautista, Bondok, Co Angelica Natasha, Cruz Ricardo, Duavit, Duterte, Enverga, Farinas, Garcia Albert, Gico, Labad Labad, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoletta, Nograles Juan Felipe, Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Romero, Singson Rachel, Tan Shamir, Tan Stephen James, Villia Fuerte, Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Yap Eric, U Jaisal Victoria.
With two hundred eighty-one members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number 6936, 7541, 7546, 7547, 7548, 7550, 7551, 7552, 7557, 7615, 7626, 7639, 7641, 7642, 7646, and 7688 are hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration and third reading of House Bill 7407, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General read the title of the bill and thereafter call for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion is approved, the Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill 7407, an act increasing the number of members of Lisanguniang Palungsod of the city of San Pedro, province of Laguna, from ten to twelve, amending for the purpose Section 10 of Republic Act Number 10420, otherwise known as the Charter of the City of San Pedro. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill number 7407.
Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advinkola, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascog, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut Big Tang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayun Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tchuwa, Tungalau, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Copilar, Co Juanco Jaime, Co Juanco Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Cuac, Quaresma, Dagoo, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, Delos Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo Sitia Mina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, D Ian Paul, Ecleo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Udella, Farinas Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fontebelia, Galeos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed, Christopher Go, Mark Golles, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Haresco Hataman, Hernandez Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara Lizatin, Lee Legarda, Libanan, Limkaytchong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Oanodizon, Padianos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisias Agabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencha, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramon Dzolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yedda Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suans, Swan Sing Horashos, Swan Sing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Jose, Tiango, Tieng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velosutwazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, U Divina Grace, U Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri.
Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill number 7407. Almonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Bautista, Bondok, Co Angelica Natasha, Cruz Ricardo, Duavit, Duterte, Enverga, Farinas, Garcia Albert, Guico, Labad Labad, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoletta, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Romero, Singson Rachel, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Villia Fuerte, Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Yap Eric, U Jaisal Victoria.
With two hundred eighty-one members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number 7407 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill number 7564, copies of which were distributed to the members of the House pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion is approved, the Secretary General is directed to do so. Please proceed.
House Bill number 7564, an act allowing the incumbent president of the Mountain Province State Polytechnic College to become the first president of the Mountain Province State University, amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 105A3 entitled "An Act Converting the Mountain Province State Polytechnic College in the municipality of Bontoc Mountain Province into a state university to be known as the Mountain Province State University", with campuses in the municipalities of Atadian, Bauco, Parecelis, and Barjeg, all located in Mountain Province, and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill number 7564. Honorable Representatives, Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advinkola, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascog, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut Big Tang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayun Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tchuwa, Tungalau, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Copilar, Co Juanco Jaime, Co Juanco Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Cuac, Quaresma, Dagoo, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, Delos Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo Sitia Mina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, D Ian Paul, Ecleo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Udella, Farinas Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fontebelia, Galeos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Golles, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Haresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lizatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaytchong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Oanodizon, Padianos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisias Agabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencha, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramon Dzolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yedda Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suans, Swan Sing Horashos, Swan Sing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Jose, Tiango, Tieng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velosutwazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, U Divina Grace, U Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill number 7564. Almonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Bautista, Bondok, Co Angelica Natasha, Cruz Ricardo, Duavit, Duterte, Enverga, Farinas, Garcia Albert, Gico, Labad Labad, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoletta, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Romero, Singson Rachel, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Villia Fuerte, Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Yap Eric, U Jaisal Victoria.
With two hundred eighty-one members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number 7564 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we immediately transmit to the Senate all the bills that we have just approved on third reading.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill numbers 7718, 7721, 7744, 7763, and 7909, and House Resolution Numbers 883, 928, and 949 as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill number 7909 as contained in Committee Report Number 498 submitted by the Committee on Ways and Means. Copies of the bill have been previously distributed to the members. Therefore, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill for consideration.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion is approved, the Secretary General is so directed. Please proceed.
House Bill 7909, an act extending the coverage and period of the availment of the Estate Tax Amnesty, amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 11213 as amended, otherwise known as the Tax Amnesty Act.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentle lady from the Third District of Nueva Ecija, the Honorable Representative Rosana Ria Vergara to sponsor the measure.
The Honorable Vergara is recognized to sponsor the measure. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues. It is necessary to extend the coverage and period of availment of the Estate Tax Amnesty Program in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. The Estate Tax Amnesty Program is set to expire this June 14, 2023. One hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred sixty individuals availed of the program from 2019 to 2023, bringing approximately 7.4 billion pesos in collection. However, there is still much that needs to be settled, and we are appealing that the amnesty be extended until June 14. until June 14, 2025, Mr. Speaker. The COVID-19 epidemic has resulted in significant death tolls, but the Estate Tax Amnesty only covered deaths on or before December 31, 2017. Hence, the committee expanded the coverage to those who died during the pandemic, specifically on or before December 31, 2021. An extension of the Estate Tax Amnesty Program would allow more families to take advantage of the program to collate the properties of decedents, settle their outstanding estate taxes at an affordable six percent flat rate, in turn freeing their assets and giving financial relief to families who are struggling in the wake of the pandemic. The exceptions enumerated in RA 11213, the original law granting the Estate Tax Amnesty, which denies the amnesty to estate tax cases which shall have become final and executory and to properties involved in cases pending in appropriate courts, such as those falling under the jurisdiction of the PCGG, involving graft and corruption, money laundering, and other crimes under the tax code. All these remain unchanged and will not be affected by this amendment. The extension of the Estate Tax Amnesty Program will encourage taxpayers to properly declare their assets, which in turn could lead to a more accurate assessment of our country's wealth and facilitate its equitable distribution. Finally, an extension of the Estate Tax Amnesty Program would benefit the government by generating revenue, offsetting increased spending on pandemic-related programs and services. It could plug budget shortfalls by encouraging more individuals and families to come forward and pay outstanding estate taxes. Honorable Speaker, fellow colleagues, I believe firmly that extending the Estate Tax Amnesty Program is a crucial policy tool during these challenging times. It provides relief to families, generates revenue for the government, and promotes a more equitable distribution of wealth. I urge my colleagues to support this most important initiative. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and a pleasant afternoon.
Thank you. Madam Sponsor, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 7909, as contained in Committee Report 498.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion's approved. Those in favor of the measure, please say aye. Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it? House Bill 7909 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session is resumed.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill 7721 as contained in the Committee Report 467, submitted by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education. Copies of the bill have been previously distributed to the members, and may I request that, therefore, that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion's approved. The Secretary General is so directed. Please proceed.
House Bill 7721, an act mandating the Technical Education and Skills Development Authority to design and implement technical vocational education and training and livelihood programs specifically for rehabilitated drug dependents and appropriating funds, therefore.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the chairperson of the Committee on Technical, Higher and Technical Education, the Representative Mark Go be recognized to sponsor the measure.
The honorable Go is recognized to sponsor the measure. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My dear colleagues, I am sponsoring House Bill Number 7721 under Committee Report 467, which mandates the Technical Education and Skills Development Authority, or TESTDA, to design and implement technical vocational education and training as well as livelihood programs for a specific group of beneficiaries. These are the former drug dependents who have undergone rehabilitation and are now drug-free and healthy individuals. This bill, Mr. Speaker, with one hundred fifteen authors and co-authors as of this time and counting, seeks to help former drug dependents become self-reliant, productive, and employable. More importantly, it aims to rebuild the values and confidence of former drug dependents and to ensure that they will be more equipped in their immersion back to society. Forever, Mr. Speaker, the measure hopes to institutionalize these Tibet and livelihood programs to ensure that they will be sustained not just in the current situation, but more so in the succeeding years. Under this bill, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, the TESTDA is mandated to coordinate with the Department of Labor and Employment to provide rehabilitated drug dependents with competitive and employable skills, which shall enhance their ability to find gainful employment and livelihood opportunities. It also mandates the Department of Labor and Employment to provide incentives to companies which employ rehabilitated drug dependents who have undergone the Tibet and livelihood programs under this proposed law. Mr. Speaker, based on the recent data from TESTDA, there were eight thousand seven hundred thirty-four former drug dependents that were given scholarships in 2021, and eight thousand two hundred fifty-seven of them graduated from different courses. With this measure, Mr. Speaker, and my dear colleagues, Congress can do its share of helping curb the drug menace and eliminate drug dependency among Filipinos. More importantly, Mr. Speaker, we can help these former drug dependents lead normal lives again, erase the stigma associated with their being former drug users, and support them in their quest to lead new lives as contributing members of society and productive citizens of this country despite their sad and regrettable past. With all these reasons, Mr. Speaker, and my dear colleagues, please join me in pushing for the immediate passage of this important piece of legislation. Again, thank you very much, and good afternoon.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member, there being no individual amendments, I move that we terminate the... There being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading of House Bill 7721, as contained in the Committee Report 467.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion's approved. Those in favor of House Bill 77 21, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it? House Bill 7721 is approved on second reading. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Honorable Go.
Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session suspended. Session is resumed.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business of day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 7744 as contained in Committee Report Number 469, submitted by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, copies of which have been previously distributed to the members. I request, therefore, that the Secretary General be instructed and read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion's approved. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill 7744, an act enhancing the continuing professional development of Filipino professionals as an integral component of career progression and specialization programs, and appropriating funds, therefore, amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 10912, otherwise known as the Continuing Professional Development Act of 2016.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the chairperson of the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, the Honorable Representative Mark Go of Baguio City, be recognized to sponsor the measure.
The honorable Go is recognized to sponsor the measure. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, it is my pride and honor that I stand in this august chamber today to sponsor House Bill 7744 under Committee Report 469, which is authored and co-authored by more than one hundred eight legislators and reported out by both the Committee on Higher and Technical Education and the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation. Mr. Speaker, almost seventy years ago, Republic Act 10912, or the Continuing Professional Development Act of 2016, was enacted. The said law aims to promote and upgrade the practice of professions in the country. Its purpose is to institute measures that will continuously improve the competence of professionals in accordance with international standards of practice. However, Mr. Speaker, the CPD Act, from its very enactment, has been met with criticisms from various sectors. Some complaints include exorbitant fees of seminars, unnecessarily difficult requirements, confusing processes, and lack of accredited training providers for the CPD requirements. This law has been considered more of an irritant, a burden, rather than as an advantage for the workforce. This measure I am proposing today, Mr. Speaker, aims to address the criticisms against and the limitations and loopholes of the CPD Act. This is a substitute measure of ten filed bills and referred to both the Committee on Higher and Technical Education and the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation, with some more than forty and co... forty authors and co-authors. In this measure, Mr. Speaker, the focus is on enhancing the continuing professional development of Filipino professionals as an integral component of the career progression and specialization programs, subject to the implementing guidelines to be prescribed by the Professional Regulation Commission, or PRC, on the career progression and specialization program and the credit accumulation and transfer systems. For every progression, the CPD is now made a mandatory requirement, not in the renewal of professional identification cards, but in the updating and upgrading of knowledge, skills, and values, as well as the qualification standards or titles of all registered and licensed professionals under the regulation of the Philippine Professional Regulation Commission. It shall also be consistent with the main objectives and requirements of the Philippine qualifications framework, which was enacted into law on January 16, 2018. One important and most welcome news for our teachers is that, under this bill, the in-service training for teachers being implemented now by the Department of Education shall be considered part of the CPD program, so that our dear teachers will no longer be burdened with attendance to other seminars that will affect not only their salaries, but also the time spent for teaching in the classroom. Mr. Speaker, this bill also requires all professionals to obtain forty-five CPD units every four years, which shall be deemed as the compliance period. However, Mr. Speaker, the bill provides certain exemptions from the CPD requirements, and this include, number one, newly licensed or registered professionals on the first renewal of their PIC within the first four years after obtaining their license; second, overseas Filipino workers as defined in this bill; and third, senior citizens who are not engaged in the practice of their profession as defined under the respective regulatory laws. Mr. Speaker, the bill also provides that during a pandemic, state of calamity, or national emergency, the PRC may temporarily suspend the compliance period for CPD requirements indefinitely or extend the end of the said compliance period to the equivalent duration of the pandemic, state of calamity, or national emergency. Mr. Speaker, a major complaint against Republic Act 10912 is that it imposes unnecessary financial and physical burden to professionals. We have thus included provisions in this measure to help eliminate this burden. For example, the bill provides that concerned government agencies, public higher education institutions, and other public institutions shall provide full funding for the CPD compliance of professionals employed by them. This measure, Mr. Speaker, mandates that all professionals shall be given CPD mandatory paid leave in sufficient number or day of days necessary to comply with the requirements of this act to be charged to their existing leave credits. This legislative proposal This legislative proposal also requires all government agencies, including government-owned and controlled corporations, to include in their annual budget an allocation for the conduct of free training and seminar for their professionals. Mr. Speaker, this bill is a refiled version of the eighteen Congress measure that was certified urgent by former President Rodrigo Rova Duterte and which was approved by the House, but remain pending with the Senate due to lack of material time, it was not passed into law. In conclusion, Mr. Speaker, we, the authors and co-authors of this substitute bill, sincerely believe that this proposed measure will adequately and positively address the criticisms against Republic Act 10912. It will also be a major step in improving the continuing professional development and career progression of our countrymen. For these reasons, Mr. Speaker, I urge all my colleagues in this August chamber to join me in the passage of this measure. Again, thank you very much, and good afternoon.
Thank you, Honorable Go. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from Act Teachers' Party List, the Honorable Franz Castro, for her interpretation.
The Honorable Castro is recognized to interpolate. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So would the good sponsor yield some of my clarificatory questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Speaker, yes. Thank you, your honor. Some clarificat- clarificatory questions lang po, Mr. Speaker, but I allowed the explanatory note by the distinguished sponsor, especially on the improvement of Republic Act 10912. So talaga namang, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, talagang yung 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 version ng law, yung 10912, talagang kinriticize siya ng mga professionals, especially the teachers. Kasi naging burden talaga, yung pagre-renew ng license or ng ID doon sa sa PRC. So ang atsaka yung siyempre, yung exorbitant money or exorbitant amount na binabayad ng mga teachers and other professionals dun sa kanilang ano no? Dun sa kanilang mga seminars. So lilinawin ko lang, Mr. Speaker, mandatory pa rin yung continuing professional development for the professionals. Tama po ba?
Ah, tama po yun.
Okay. So sinasabi rin naman sa konstitucyon na dapat iprovide ng employer at ng government na nagha-hire ng mga professionals, yung continuing development program. Tama po?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you po.
Yes, in the case of the teachers, for example, if they are employed in the Department of Education, it would be the responsibility of the DepEd to provide CPD for our teachers, the forty-five units in four years. Dati nga yan, three years, tama niya, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, yung pong training nila will be conducted, and all those training programs that are conducted by department will be considered as compliance to the CPD requirement.
Okay, kasi, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, so there are two sets of in-service training during summer and during the semestral break. Okay, so those are the in-service trainings of the teachers. Ang problema lang natin dito, Mr. Speaker, kung ito ay magiging mandatory, though siyempre, lahat ng mga naka-employ sa DepEd, obligado ang Department of Education to provide the in-service training. Is it also true to the private school teachers? Is it the their employer o yung school na pinagtatrabahana nila to provide the in-service training to them also?
Well, it's not mandatory on the part of the private educational institutions, but they will be encouraged, and we will ask them under this bill to charge them the minimum, you know, cost if they go to a private institutions that will conduct the training.
Um, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I understand ano yung mga private school, pero nakalagay kasi sa konstitucyon eh, government and the employer, yung magpo-provide ng CPD. So bakit kailangang magbayad din yung mga private school? So yun din yung winawari ng ating mga private school teachers, kasi nag-aano rin sila, nagbabayad din sila dun sa mga seminars, dun sa mga trainings na kinokonduk outside their school. So di ba dapat katulad din sa mga public school, pinuprovide yung in-service training mismo ng kanilang mga employer? So halimbawa, katulad ng isang private school na maga-hire din sila ng mga speakers o ng mga trainers to train their teachers in the private school, di ba dapat ganun din? So bakit ang mga private school ay pupunta sa labas? Kasi meron kaming experience, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, sa Quezon City, dahil ang mga private school ay a-under naman ng DepEd, ma-attend sila dun sa mga in-service training ng mga teachers sa public school.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, dalawa ang pwedeng i-attend ng mga private educational institutions teachers. They can attend government-sponsored training programs, and at the same time, in many cases, and in almost all cases, yung mga private institutions, they conduct their own training at no cost. There might be some that will, but we will encourage them to ensure that they will be giving free training to their own employees. However, if the teacher or any other professional will attend the training outside of these programs sa gobyerno atsaka sa private, then they have to pay yung kanilang training. But this training is not simply given to them or that they will attend for the sake of complying with this law, so that they will be able to get their IDs from the PRC. But this is part of their development as a requirement in their continuing development as professionals, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker, can the private school teachers, halaba, they will attend seminars or training outside their school at a lower cost naman siguro, can they be refunded? For example, by the administrator or the management of the school?
We have not provided that provision here, the moderator, Mr. Speaker, but that's a very good suggestion, you know, as long as they are capable to pay the training. As a matter of fact, it will be cheaper for them if they probably get somebody to train them for their own development, so that they can better do their jobs in their respective schools than probably doing it by themselves. But I would surmise, as provided in this bill, we need to encourage them to attend their own internal training and at the same time, encourage the institutions to provide their own training, as well as, for those who are in the private schools, they can join training conducted at no cost to them, provided by the government among public school teachers.
Okay, siguro to be coordinated, no? Kasi it's up for the professional teachers then, kung saan niya gusto, pag ano, to gain the CPD units. So siguro mapwede nating mailagay, Mr. Speaker, no? So kung marerefund sila at a reasonable cost naman, as part of the ano, di ba? As part of the CSC, parang yung social responsibility rin ng mga employer para sa kanilang mga teachers. Don't you think that would be?
Yeah, I think we can consider that probably in the implementing rules and regulations once this bill is passed into law.
So yung mandatory na sinasabi natin dito na makagain ng ID. So narinig ko, Mr. Speaker, in your explanatory message, that it is the certificate of the registration is mandatory. So alin po ba yung dapat na iavail ng professionals? Yung certificate of registration or the ID or both?
Well, ang ito pong amendment natin, o yung pagpalit ng, pagbabago ng batas, ay hindi nakadiretsyo ang objective nito na ginagawa natin na mag-comply sila para makakuha ng ID. Ang objective natin dito ay maiyangat natin yung kakayahan ng ating mga professionals, so that they can perform better their functions in the organization. Yung po yung pinakadaylan, but as a professional, you need really to have your ID, no? So that you will be recognized as a professional, depending on what profession you are in.
Yes, so yun nga, Mr. Speaker, yung gusto ko yung linawin, kasi may bayad din kasi ito, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, yung ID na ibinibigay ng PRC. So dahil yung batas natin, ang the essence is for the professionals to show, di ba, to their employer na they are capable, updated sila ng mga skills and knowledge. So kailangan lang nila na they have, for four years, they have attained forty-five units, di ba? So that could be given in a certificate or registration. Kasi, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, sa public school kasi, ang nagiging problema ng mga teachers natin, talagang nire-require sila ng ID. Na kahit na meron naman silang mga in-service training, meron silang registration that they have this such units, pinagsasubmit pa rin at hindi ito, at hindi ire-recognize or hindi kompleto yung kanilang mga requirements for promotion if they don't have the ID. So ang sinasabi ko nga, Mr. Speaker, maganda yung esense nung sinasabi po ng ating distinguished sponsor, na pagpapatunay lang na meron talagang, meron talagang patunay na naggain talaga ang professionals ng ganitong forty-five units for CPD. Pero pag nasa field po, talagang rerequire yung ID.
Um, Mr. Speaker, Madam Moderator, Madam Interpretor, yung pong certification na sila ay nagtapos, manggagaling po yan sa nagconduct ng training.
Yes.
No, ngayon, pag ikaw ay nagre-renew ng iyong lisensya, you have to show proof that you have completed the forty-five day, I mean, the forty-five CPD units. Yun lang po ang kailangan mong ipresent. Ngayon, pag ikaw ay nagapply ng for-promotion, o kaya i-consider ka ng yung employer for promotion, hindi naman titignan sa iyo yung ID mo, titignan yan.
Yes, precise.
Yung inyong natapos.
Yes.
At yung mga training at seminars na inattend mo, because those are the things that will add value to the company, not the ID.
Yun po ang, Mr. Speaker, gusto ko yung mag-clarify that the certification lang, that you have graduated ng mga ganitong units. Pero pero tama po ba yung impression that the ID should be optional for the professionals to get it? Kasi kung gusto mo magkaroon ng ID from the PRC, kasi nilalagyan kasi nila yun, Mr. Speaker, ng ano eh, expiration date? Yung ID mo may expiration date, di ba? Pero yung certification mo, forty-five units, that would good for four years. So yun na nagiging problema natin, Mr. Sponsor, no? Yung pagre-require ng ID pagdating na na sa field. So nililinaw ba natin dito sa ating bill na hindi ito required for the professional to get the ID? But the certification lang of registration and certification ng registration, yung mga CPD units?
Well, this is how I should look at it, ano? Yung ID na yan, requirement jan to prove that you have completed the CPD forty-five units and that you are in that profession, no? Pero hindi ito ang batayan para masabi natin na ikaw ay nakapagtapos ng forty-five units, di ba? Ang forty-five units o hours na o units ang natapos mo ay galing sa nagconduct ng training, no?
Yes, tapos, Mr. Speaker, di ba i-evaluate yun ng PRC? If indeed you have gained forty-five units for the CPD? So bibigyan ka ngayon ng registration na you have complied forty-five units for this, for this ano no, period, four years, for example, in our law? So would that be enough na magamit ng professional for their purpose of promotion?
Sa aking palagay, pwedeng gawin yun. Hindi yung ID ang basis para ikaw ay mapromote. Ang basis ng iyong promotion ay dun sa natapos mong mga training programs. At ang magbibigay sa inyo yan, yung, yung ano, yung kompanya o yung organisasyon magha-hire sa iyo, di ba?
Yes, so ang gusto ko lang sabihin dito, Mr. Speaker, parang, kumbaga, yung certificate of registration ng forty-five units na nakuha mo, yun yung enough na to prove na updated ka, di ba, doon sa iyong ano? Not the ID, kasi optional lang yun. Kasi dagdag, Mr. Speaker, dagdag na gastos ito sa mga professional. And you have naman the other IDs, di ba?
Pero, Mr. Speaker,
di ba na ano?
Sa practical standpoint, eh mahirap yung dala mo yung isang, isang folder na documentation. Mas maganda na yung ID para isa lang, nakalagay pa sa bulsa mo yan. So yun ang mas practical. I do not know how much is the cost of the ID. But probably we can look at this on how we can help our employees and professionals, you know, if the cost, siguro it will not cost you a hundred pesos ito or more.
Five hundred yata.
Five hundred, oh, siguro. Sabihin natin sa PRC na kailangan find ways and means to reduce the cost of the ID.
Yes, so yun naman ang mahalaga dito sa bill natin, Mr. Speaker, yung katunayan na na-update si professionals, yung kanyang mga units ay kompleto, at mag-iissue ang PRC na indeed nakapagcomplete ka nga ng forty-five units. Hindi mo naman kailangan dalhin yung mga, yung mga iba't ibang certificate mo for four years. Dadalin mo lang yan sa PRC para to prove at mabigyan ka ng certificate of registration na you have complied the CPD.
Yes, yes.
Kung ngayon, kung ang professional gusto niya magkaroon ng ID from the PRC, that should be optional for our, for our professionals to have it. Ah, yun po yung aking.
Yeah, Ma- Mr. Speaker, Madam Interpretor, maganda yung suggestion ninyo. So instead of getting an ID or having an ID, meron ka na lang na isang certification para ganun.
Yes, yun naman po yung.
That can be considered, probably we will recommend that to the PRC.
And to the.
But many people are so interested to have an ID, kasi it's easy to carry and you can keep it in your wallet.
Yeah, it's their option.
Instead of a certification, madaling masira, madaling mawala.
So that's their option, kasi, Mr. Speaker, ang sinasabi ko lang po, doon sa practical na nangyayari ngayon sa field, na talagang ano no, pinipilit ang mga teacher na ipresent yung ID kahit na meron na silang certificate of registration from the PRC that they have this, they have complied yung required units for CPD. Okay, so yun. Another thing, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, as regard to the service credits, kasi when we are discussing this bill, alam ko po, Mr. Speaker, they are, the professionals are given one or two days with pay para lakarin yung kanilang requirements. Pero bakit po nakalagay dun, serve a charge to their service credits? Di ba sabi natin dapat magkaroon ng one day na paid leaves na hindi gagamit ng existing na service credit si professional para lakarin yung ano? Bakit nabago yata yung?
Yung, Madam Interpretor, Mr. Speaker, yung paid leave, kasama na yan eh. Yung other leaves, basta't binayaran ng gobyerno, eh binayaran yung empleyado, eh paid leave yun. Ang suggestion mo ngayon eh, on top of what they are receiving, dapat meron pang additional paid leave just to attend yung, yung ano, itong training na ito.
I know.
that will complete forty-five days.
Not to attend the training, ah, Mr. Speaker, kasi paid naman na talaga 'yun eh. Sa, sa public school, in-service training, paid naman 'yun. Alam mo, alakarin ko lang 'yung lisensya ko o kukuha ako ng ID. Di ba, parang, ah, parang ang discussion natin sa committee noon, ah, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, meron talagang isang day na apart from the service credits that, that was, that was, that were earned by the, the teacher or the professional, di ba? Parang may ganun.
Ah, ang, ah, na final decision po natin sa committee ay, ah, it will be a paid leave and it will be charged to your existing leave credits that are also paid, ah, Madam Interpreator, Mr. Speaker.
So, ah, sana maano natin 'yun sa amendments, ah, Mr. Speaker. So that would be very helpful then, na hindi na rin gagamit nung kanilang, ah, service credits or leave, ah, leave credits po.
Tag-aralan po natin, ah, Mr. Speaker, opo. Kasi po, 'yun po 'yung la- decision natin sa ating committee. Eh, sa, palagay ko po, very reasonable naman 'yun, itong napag-decide natin that they will be paid, but this will be charged to their existing paid leave.
Eh, kung wala na pong service credit si teacher, ah, Mr. Speaker, so absent sila, pag wala silang service credit o 'yung professional, nagamit na nila 'yung kanilang mga leave credits. Marami tayong mga teachers nagkakasakit, wala namang sick leave ang mga teacher. Ganun din yata 'yung mga nurse, tsaka mga health workers, wala naman silang sick leave, ah, wala naman sila talagang, ano, nagagamit nila. So kung, kung mga, mga situation na ganun, na wala na talagang service credit si teacher. So makakatulong, Mr. Speaker, na hindi sila maabsinan kahit na isang araw.
Siguro po, tingnan po natin 'yun. So in cases that the employee does not anymore have a paid leave credit, ah, pwedeng iconsider natin siguro 'yun, ah, Madam, ah, Interpreator, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, thank you, ah, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Doon naman po, Mr. Speaker, sa ating mga, ah, distinguished sponsor, sa mga health workers. Kasi, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, although sa professional teachers, sa amin, sa teacher, positive naman 'yung mga nilagay nating, ano, nilagay nating mga revisions at tsaka amendments. Kailangan, may problema po 'yung mga health workers natin, especially 'yung mga nurses natin to the barrio. 'Yung mga nasa mga rural areas na talagang, ano, no, talagang in terms of salary, hindi sila kapantay nung mga nasa, nasa urban or nasa city or ng nationality. So in terms of mga benefits, wala din po sila. Tapos, natseserve sila ng wholeheartedly doon sa ating mga kababayan, sa mga rural areas, sa mga, mga lugar na hindi napupuntahan, even ng mga, mga nurses o mga doktor, di ba? So, di ba sila pwedeng ma-exempt, ah, Mr. Speaker, doon sa, ah, sa sinasabi na, sa CPD? Or ano ba 'yung pwede nating maibigay din na, um, na incentive para doon sa ating mga health workers na mga nasa barrio? Pero siyempre, nakaka, nagte-train din naman sila at hindi nila din kaya na magbayad para sa CPD.
Ah, ah, Mr. Speaker, ah, Madam Interpreator, sa aking pong palagay, dap- dapat la tayo. We should even take the initiative na tayo ma-improve natin 'yung sarili natin. Di po ba kailangan 'yun? Lalo na ngayon, ang teknolohiya ay nagche-change. Almost every month, every year, things change. So kailangan din natin na continuous ang pagbabago ng isang tao at kailangan madevolve 'yung sarili niya so he can cope up with the changes obtaining in a particular community or in a particular country. More so with nurses, more so with doctors, more so with teachers. Because they interact with people. If they are doing treatment to our, ah, people, eh, kailangan updated sila sa mga pagbabago na nangyayari sa lipunan, sa medisina, sa nursing care.
Mm-mm.
And this is the, the, the reason why we want this law to be amended because we want to consider this as an opportunity para ma-enhance natin 'yung capabilities ng ating mamamayan.
Yes, ah, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I, ah, I understand your, ano, no, your explanation. Kailangan nga talagang may mga ganung cases din talaga ng mga health workers talaga natin na hindi na rin nila afford 'yung CPD na kaya nga sila ay, ano, no, ang kanilang talagang, um, ang kanila talagang posisyon ay hindi talaga mandatory itong CPD. Pero on the part of the teacher, so meron namang improvement, ah, eto, so 'yun lang, ah, 'yung, 'yung, 'yung mga, 'yung sektor na 'yun na binabanggit natin, baka mabigyan din natin ng certain, ano, no, kung certain provisions like, um, kung, kung, kung sa normal na, ano, na mga professionals, kung forty-five, umalessen sila. So siguro, baka dapat mapag-aralan din natin, ah, Mr. Speaker. Kasi doon na nila dinivote talaga 'yung kanilang buhay sa mga rural areas at mga mga liblib na lugar sa ating bansa na hindi talaga napupuntahan kahit na doktor.
Yes, ah, Mr. Speaker, ah, Madam Interpreator, ah, kailangan po, hindi lamang ang Department of Education na magconduct ng training, pati 'yung iba't ibang ayensya ng Gobyerno. Kamukha rin sa DOH, kailangan may training 'yung mga nurses natin, mga doktor, mga other employees in the medical field. Kailangan din po 'yung continuous training and this bill will also address that they should provide opportunities for them to undergo such training and seminars at the cost of the government. 'Yun po 'yung intent nito.
Yes, ah, thank you, Mr. Sponsor, distinguished sponsor, I agree, no? Da-dapat, ah, um, i-provide talaga even the DOH na nag-aassign ng ating mga nurses and health workers sa mga rural areas. Kung, kung pwedeng i-provide din 'yung, kung doon sila magkakaroon ng CPD in that area, provide din siguro 'yung, ano, no, 'yung, ah, ah, amount nung kanilang ibabayad doon sa mga, ah, sa lugar na kung saan they will, they could avail of the CPD units. So, so pwede siguro ilagay natin sa IRR later.
Pwede po silang, ah, Mr. Speaker, ah, Madam Interpreator, pwede po silang sumama doon sa mga regular training programs na gagawin ng isang departamento like the Department of Health sa mga nurses, mga midwives, sa iba't ibang, ah, areas ng bansa. Pwede pong gawin natin 'yan kasi hindi natin pwedeng allocate na merong specific budget to be given ah, to them so that they can enroll in a private, ano, baka, ang mangyayari po doon eh, it will open the Pandora's box. Ah, iba-ibang training ang gagawin, samantalang ito, talagang uniform and it will be consistent with the overall programs ng ating Gobyerno.
Okay, um, eto po bang CPD natin, ah, Mr. Speaker, ah, distinguished sponsor, is applicable doon sa mga lawyers, sa ating.
Meron po silang, sa kanila, meron din sila, ay, 'yun po sa kanilang, ah.
'Yung mga lawyers.
Yes.
So hindi sila covered itong CPD.
Hiwalay ito, meron kasi silang, ano.
'Yung pong mga, ah, lo- lawyers, ah, mga doctors, meron ding hiwalay?
Meron.
Or sakop din sila ng CPD natin?
Covered sila dito, pero 'yung mga lawyers, iba 'yung kanila, meron sila.
Okay, so including, included din dito 'yung mga engineers?
Yes, everybody.
Okay, so lahat ng mga professionals?
Yes.
Ah, na merong, ah, license under the PRC, covered?
Yes, yes, ah, Madam, ah.
Okay, so, Mr. Speaker, 'yun lang po 'yung aking mga clarification. So last manifestation, no? So ang kinatawang ito po ay hindi naman po tutul doon sa continuing professional development for our professionals. Mahalaga din na, na-update ng professionals, 'yung kanyang skills, knowledge, di ba, doon sa, sa kanyang profession, ah, in order that, ah, to improve 'yung kanyang ser, 'yung ating serbisyo sa ating mga mamayan. So tinututulan lang natin 'yung ginagawang negosyo ang CPD at eto nga, ah, at, at kami rin, ang aming, ang amin ding paniniwala na dapat hindi rin ito gawing mandatory sa ating mga professionals. So 'yun lang po, Mr. Speaker, thank you, distinguished sponsor.
May pumusalamat, ah, Mr. Speaker, Madam, ah, Interpreator. Thank you.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to interpetulate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session suspended. Session is resumed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other committee or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading of House Bill Number 7744.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion approved. Those in favor of House Bill Number 7744, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. Ah, House Bill 7744 has been approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 883 as contained in Committee Report 464. And for this purpose, may request as the Secretary General be directed to read the title of this said resolution.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion approved, the Secretary General is directed to do so. Please proceed.
House Resolution 883, resolution congratulating and commending Michael Harris Conlon for winning the silver medal in the signature coffee latte category and the bronze medal in the signature coffee brewer category using Philippine coffee beans at the 2022 Global Coffee Championship held in Kintex, South Korea.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 883 as contained in Committee Report 464.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion approved. Those in favor of House Resolution 883, please say aye. Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 883 is approved. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 928. And for this purpose, may request as the Secretary General be directed to read the title of this said measure.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion approved. The Secretary General is directed to do so. Please proceed.
House Resolution 928, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of the Honorable Albert Ferrero Del Rosario, former Secretary of Foreign Affairs and Philippine Ambassador to the United States.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 928.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion approved. Those in favor of House Resolution 928, please say aye. Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 928 is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 949 in consolidation with House Resolution 946. And for this purpose, may request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of this said measure.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion approved, the Secretary General is directed to do so. Please proceed.
House Resolution 949, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of the Honorable Carlos M. Padilla, Governor of the Province of Nueva Vizcaya and former Deputy Speaker and Representative of the Lone Legislative District of Nueva Vizcaya during the 8th, 10th, 11th, 12th, 14th, 15th, and 16th Congresses.
Those in favor of House Resolution 949, please say aye. Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 949 is adopted. In consolidation with House Resolution Number 946. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House Resolutions to the appropriate committees. House Resolution 812 to the Committee on Health. House Resolution 841 to the Committee on Public Order and Safety. House Resolution 842 to the Committee on Ecology and Natural Resources. House Resolution 843 to the Committee on Transportation. House Resolution 846 to the Committee on Energy. House Resolution 847 to the Committee on Ecology and Natural Resources. House Resolution 848 to the Committee on Ecology and Natural Resources. House Resolution 849 to the Committee on Health. House Resolution 850 to the Committee on Ecology and Natural Resources. House Resolution 852 to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability. House Resolution 854 to the Committee on Ecology and Natural Resources. House Resolution 855 to the Committee on National Defense and Security. House Resolution 856 to the Committee on Public Order and Safety. House Resolution 858 to the Committee on Public Works and Highways. House Resolution 860 to the Committee on Transportation. House Resolution 862 to the Committee on Ecology and Natural Resources. House Resolution 869 to the Committee on Ecology and Natural Resources. House Resolution 879 to the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs. House Resolution 887 to the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples. And House Resolution 948 to the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until tomorrow, May 10, Wednesday at 3:00 PM.
Session is adjourned till May 10, ah, 3:00 PM. Thank you.